Meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors.
I call to order this meeting of the King George County Service Authority Board of Directors.
Mr. Miller, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, in that case, I will open the floor for public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. When you come up, please state your name and your address and you will have your opportunity. Public comment is open now.
Test, test, got it. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the boards, my name is Brent Hunsinger. I'm with Friends of the Rapid Hennick. Glad to be here to discuss water with you all tonight, to listen about the intricacies of the demands for surface water and groundwater. First, I'd like to give a little update on things that I'm working with you all in the county. I don't like to always be before you to ask for things or oppose things. That's how the nature of the business, though. The first thing that I'd like to talk about is I have been in conversations with Parks and Rec on looking forward with the new park on the Rapid Hennick helping provide trees. So we will provide trees for that park as well as looking around for grants to try and find public access down to the river. That'll be most likely canoe and kayak access due to the steepness of the banks. Also, I don't believe it's actually been shared real publicly, but Friends of the Rapid Hennick has applied for and received and is beginning to do programming with the high school. We received another NOAA BEWET grant to do meaningful watershed educational experiences with those kids. And so I believe some of the in-class programming is beginning. And in the next couple of years, you will see more tree planting hopefully going on as for action projects at the schools as well as other activities going on throughout the county. So we are very glad to have our educators back in the classrooms here in King George on a regular basis. That'll most likely be with the ninth grade. Also, Virginia Conservation Assistance Program is something that is still available. There is a lot of money for that in the state. Most of my, I have a site visit tomorrow. Most of my site visits and projects have come in the Dalgreen area for living shorelines. So I'll be there again tomorrow doing another site visit. So those are slowly but steadily coming in. So any help that you all could give with that, it's basically the opportunity for people to deal with some stormwater and flooding issues if they have that for old construction, not new construction. I do have a question about the status of the Community Flood Preparedness Fund, money that you all had received last year, the new grant application period for that. You received thirty-some thousand dollars to create your resilience plan. The reason I ask is because the next round of grant funding has come open or is coming open very soon. And so you will have until, I think, December to apply if you... I don't know, basically you have a chance, but if you don't have your plan, the window might be too much. The other issue with that is obviously if Reggie is not kept, you will not have Community Flood Preparedness Funds going forward. That's a whole different ball of wax. Finally, the Rapid Hennick River Basin Commission next week, they will be discussing water supply planning a little bit. And then at the December meeting in Caroline, that will be, water supply planning will be a major topic. The Director of DEQ, Director of Water Supply Planning will be presenting at that meeting down in Caroline, so that one is not to be missed. Love to have you there. Finally, public participation and transparency is going to be very important. I know I've mentioned this before, but I cannot stress to you all enough. Between businesses, industry, and local government, holding public participation outreach events before projects come to the Planning Commission and/or the Board of Supervisors for votes, getting that out months in advance really helps people understand what is going on. And it's not necessarily happening in a lot of the counties in this watershed. And so there's a lot of angst and there's a lot of misinformation or misunderstanding that's going on. So just that is my ask to please get out in front of this. It benefits you all and it benefits the citizens and all interested stakeholders. So that's it. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors and the Service Authority. My name is Hobie Mitchell. I live in Aldi, Virginia. I also am here with my business partner Dale Hamas and Burnley Taylor is also here. We're here tonight as a resource for both of you, for the both boards and commissions. I was a 20-year member of a service authority up in Northern Virginia for 20 years and Chair of the Finance side of that. Dale was a 45-year Executive Director of the Service Authority up there. We've kind of been where you're at now and saw a lot of things happening. We have a lot of experience in that and some thoughts. And we're here tonight as a resource for our honest opinions about where you're at and some thoughts about it and share our experiences. So that's all we have to say and we're here to be of any resource and help if we can possibly do it in your decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Dan, do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Did anyone receive any correspondence to be entered into the record for tonight? Okay, in that case, I will close public comment and we will move on discussion items. We'll start with this King George County Service Authority versus utility, long-term versus short-term plan. Mr. Miller?
So I guess I'll start off and then Mr. Miller can kind of chime in. I know probably back in the spring, maybe we had, or maybe at the end of last year, we had a discussion with the supervisors about flipping the authority to a utility. At this point, really, it's pretty much operating like a utility sans the actual title. Just to kind of clarify the basic differences, an authority in theory, anyway, would be an autonomous body that makes its own decisions and whatnot. The kind of how this authority is set up, it's really sort of still tied to the county pretty heavily. And what you're finding more and more, and I think you, some of you have probably seen this when you're trying to negotiate or get in development and whatnot, the Service Authority is completely, is pretty much disconnected. Or it's a little bit more connected now that Mr. Miller's sitting as the interim general manager, but it's disconnected generally from the county. And the county's goals and the authority's goals aren't necessarily the same. And it's my opinion and several people's opinion that honestly turning it into a utility where you have a director or whatnot sitting on it like you'd have any other department here will give you one better oversight. Really, it doesn't change the finances at all from my understanding, talking to Ms. Han and others, to enterprise fund if I'm saying that correctly. The money is completely separate and it's operated similarly. The difference being when somebody comes in, like Mr. Mitchell or whatnot comes in to plan a development, he sits down with the county, the utility director and whatnot, and everybody hashes out what's going on. And it also allows better planning for the future. You can really figure out what you guys want to, what the supervisors at a given time want to do, where you want the development to go and how that looks. Right now, you could want something across the street. If we don't have the ability to do it, it's almost like go pound sand. I think in a small, in a really big community, an authority might be an ideal situation. But from what I see in a smaller community, I think it's, since we're so interconnected anyway, the HRs, the county is providing us HR, county is providing us finance oversight, county, other than the title, it really is a utility lacking any county management, so to speak. There's a disconnect in what the county can do and what the county can't. So wanted to kind of start that discussion. I think most of you are probably aware, we've switched the management day-to-day operations over to Emboden, so they're covering all that work. We do have a small crew doing the maintenance and some of the accounting and whatnot. But other than that, day-to-day operations are being serviced by Emboden. And Bryce is actually helping us out on the engineering end on a lot of the projects. So there's already quite a bit of interaction. It's, in my opinion, operating like a utility, just lacking the actual formality of it. So just wanted to start those discussions. And kind of the long-term, short-term plan is, where do you want, the long-term plan, I think, is switching it to utility. There might be a short-term where we have to, as an authority, hire somebody that may be eventually the director to kind of oversee things. Because I know there's going to be more and more projects and whatnot that I don't think we want Mr. Miller bogged down in on the day-to-day and probably Bryce is going to get bogged down as well, doing more Service Authority work than county work. So just wanted to kind of get people's thoughts, get people thinking on that and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I appreciate the synopsis. I would hazard, I guess, I think we all kind of recognize that we're in everything but name, a utility. So I do think it makes sense to move in that direction. I'm not sure the process that would need to be done and how long it would take to get to that position or if there's any intermediate steps that, just from a legal perspective on how to get there. So but I'll leave it to my colleagues also to weigh in if they think differently or if they agree.
So as you all know, I do sit on both boards and I do agree.
I would also agree. I mean, they're just, they're so intertwined together now anyways. And, you know, with finance and, you know, basically everything, like you said, the only thing that's different is that there's a name. I mean, we're responsible for, you know, the debt, the county is, we... And it's, I think it's time, and especially since the day-to-day operations are basically farmed out anyways, I think for sure that it's, you know, that's the direction we need to go in. But, you know, like Chairman said, you know, how do we do that legally and everything? So that might be a lackey question.
Yeah, so kind of flowing from that discussion, there is a legal mechanism that's specified in the Virginia Code for dissolution of a authority of this type. The process that's specified would be that the authority, the Board of Directors, would first need to adopt a resolution, basically expressing an intention that you want to go in that route. And then it would be up to the Board of Supervisors to have to render a conclusion that either the purposes of the authority have been rendered impractical or impossible, or the obligations will be assumed by the county. So if you wanted to move in a utility direction, it would take a resolution by each body. And then we would have to work on a plan to accomplish it. To my knowledge, at least two jurisdictions have recently done this transition. In 2020, the Pennsylvania County Service Authority dissolved and Pennsylvania County filed articles of dissolution and did a process of transitioning all of the real property assets, the digital assets, and all the necessary things. It was like a 15-month process from when they initiated it to get through it all. And the other example I have is Green County. It initiated a resolution to withdraw from the Rapid Hennick Service Authority in April 2021. Now, that is a multi-jurisdictional service authority, so that one was a little bit more complicated, but they did eventually get approval, subject to a withdrawal and transition agreement with the other jurisdictions that are part of that authority. And so just in August of this year, they adopted an ordinance that establishes the structure of their utility department. So I think those are instructive examples if that is the direction that both boards want to work towards. But it would be a lengthy process. Hard to say exactly how long. If we started now and during the budget process, we were planning towards that goal, optimistically, maybe we could do it with the next fiscal year, but it might take a little bit longer than that. But that might be a path forward if that's something you all want to look at.
So the sound of the start, those resolutions by both boards, does it matter if one goes before the other? Is it just whenever?
Yeah, so the statute has the Authority Board go first. So coming out of this meeting, if that's the direction that, you know, kind of the consensus, then I can draft a resolution to that effect that could be considered as early as the next meeting, really.
So I'll ask the Service Authority, just from the perspective of timing, what do you guys think of like moving forward now or looking to hold off for a little bit?
I apologize for getting here late, but this is a little quick to dissolve this. And I heard something just as I walked in, absorb the debt of the Service Authority. Could you clarify that?
I don't think I mentioned debt. So the real property assets would have to be transferred, all of the permits, agreements, all of those things would have to be passed along. But I'm glad you asked for the clarification. So the debt would have to stay as an enterprise fund. So the county would not be assuming, and actually, I think Mr. Stonehill might have said county is responsible for that. County has a moral obligation, which is not a legal obligation, but it's a pledge that you will back up the Service Authority should it be in default. But it's not a legal requirement, like no one can go after the general fund of the county on behalf of the Service Authority. And I believe Mrs. Han could provide a little more information on that aspect of it, that even if it were to become a utility, it would still be an enterprise fund and the debts would be limited to the income that's coming into the utility, not to county assets.
But my next question on that is how would that affect the bond rating for the county? Because now it's a county utility, even though you're paying for it out of the funds that are received. How is that, have we talked to Davenport about that?
We have, and I think as Ms. Lackey indicated, it's an enterprise fund. So you're not mixing the funds and you're not going to say that if the Service Authority say they're going to build a water treatment plant, and that's obviously a multimillion-dollar project. You're not going, as the county, to pledge general revenue that you get out of the general fund from property tax, personal property. That's not going to fund that. You would use that based on your ability to generate revenue through water and sewer rates or water rates. And so that's how you would fund that. Now, if the county said that we want to pitch in and send some capital money over there, you could do those kind of things. You can do inter-fund loans or inter-fund transfers, but it's got to be, it's got to be spelled out, it's got to go through the process of a formal resolution or possibly even an ordinance. I mean, it is like going to a bank, the Service Authority going to a bank and asking for funds if there was those kind of inter-fund type of situations. But it's not something that Ms. Han could come to you and say, oh, we need to, you know, it's the end of the fiscal year, we need some money. Can we ask the general fund revenue to just back it? No, you're separate. It's a separate entity, it's a separate, you know, I've said this before, you have three counties around you that are public utilities. You have Stafford, you have Carolina, and you have Spotsylvania County that are public utilities. And they obviously have water rates and sewer rates that they charge their customers. And so there's never a mixing of the two. You can't. It would affect your ability to borrow if you violated that. Your credit rating would go way down.
But here's the issue, is there's a big assumption out there, especially in the online world, that if the county took it on as a utility, everyone in the county would pay for the debt.
No, I mean, not unless the county wanted to do that. The county could make that decision if they wanted to do it, but that would be the decision of the board. It would not be something that would be just easily done. It would have to be spelled out in some kind of a fashion that you wanted to do that. But other than that, you would operate the utility just as you're operating it right now.
So what is the advantage, I guess? And I might have missed that, but Mr. Morris, jump in. That's where I'm asking.
I have a question for you. You said everyone would have to contribute to the water and sewer, the conception. What's wrong with that? I pay for schools. I don't have any kids in school. Should I be exempt from paying from school since I don't use school? I don't see the difference.
I do, and I can give you the difference right now, but finish your question.
What is the difference? Please educate me.
Okay, well, first, and I'm not educating, I'm just saying that, you know, I understand that. I've heard that many times from folks that are on the Service Authority like yourself. But, you know, a person that's on well and septic, they have paid to have their well put in, they have paid for their septic, they pay for all their repairs themselves. I'm just going to give you my own example because I don't know everybody's personal business. To put in my well in septic, it cost over $70,000. I didn't ask for everybody in the county to pay for that. When I had to have my drain field repaired, it was over $2,000. I didn't ask everybody to pay for that. So there's a lot, there's people with smaller bills for that and higher bills, but hold on, let me finish the last. So I've talked to some folks in the financial realm about this. And one comparison is we spread that out over a 30-year mortgage. If you're someone who's on the water and sewer authority, that is, you don't pay for those right off the bat. You pay for those in your mortgage. I guess sometimes they would pass on the fee, but it's a little different. Maybe I'm wrong in that analogy, but the other thing is that the taxes that the citizens pay, like to the schools, and they pay for the taxes, the schools pay a water bill. And so we're paying taxes and they pay the water bill. The restaurants, we go to the restaurants, they put it into their cost of doing business of their services. So the residents in the county do pay. It's just two different views.
But you don't get a bill for the fire department if they come to put a fire out of your house.
But our taxes pay for that.
We don't get shared when Chief Moody comes to us for a million dollars for a new fire truck or Sheriff Giles comes to us for, he needs new patrol cars. It's part of doing business. Water and sewer is part of doing business. Looking, and I default to Mr. Parker on this because this is his line of work, but me sitting on the sidelines, from what I'm seeing in the future of what is coming down from state and federal regs, is there's going to be a push to expand the municipal water system. I mean, look at Flint, Michigan, okay? I cannot see them continuing to allow individual wells to be put in. I can foresee in the future, if your well fails, they're going to say, well, you're going to have to go on municipal water now. Now, I pay, I just paid $215 to have my septic tank pumped, but that's part of the water and sewer. It's part of owning a household. You've got to do this, okay? There's always been the talk, you know, it takes a village to raise a child, okay? Having drinkable water, safe drinkable water, having safe discharge of our treated water benefits everybody, everybody who lives here. Because if someone's septic tank fails, it can contaminate the groundwater in that area. If our sewer treatment plant fails, it could be catastrophic as we know we've had some close issues. So...
How much do you want the rest of the county to pay? I'm just asking, like an annual fee?
Sure. I'm a retiree. I'm on a fixed income. I'll pledge $50 a year right now for that.
So at the moment, we're kind of discussing the idea of going to a utility, which is a little bit different than the idea of how the, whether you would have the county start paying in towards the Service Authority.
But you're talking economic development. You just had this big presentation by Nick. You're in the process of redoing all the zoning and stuff. You cannot have the economic development that is projected, that's anticipated coming without water and sewer. And do you want to have control over that or do you want to have this? We've been playing things back and forth for the last four years on different projects and stuff. It needs to be streamlined. Nick will tell you, you know, we've lost potential developers because we don't have the water or sewer and we can't give them a projected data when we might have water and sewer in that area.
And so for economic development, that is an area where you can start looking to use county dollars because you can justify it from the perspective of it is for the benefit of everyone. And we have done that in the past where we ran the water line down from the sheriff's office down the Route 3, the 3301 intersection. And so those kinds of activities can be done. And if you're saying there's more opportunities and we should do more, that's fair. I'm not opposed to that, but again, try to circle back. This is a discussion about whether we should move from a Service Authority to a utility. And those, what this discussion is could be regardless of whether we're a Service Authority or utility, those activities can be done by the county regardless of the organizational makeup of it. So I just, I wouldn't mind trying to circle back to what we were discussing.
So to kind of answer the questions and jump on to what Mr. Granger said, one, initially, it operates the same way it is when you set it up. Board of Supervisors could always give money to the authority through economics. It's always been possible, it's still possible. And you could add a special tax at some point if you wanted to help it out, whatever. But that's not what we're talking about when we're talking about making the switch. Those are decisions by Boards of Supervisors either probably significantly into the future. The real big benefit that I see here for the county is the negotiating posture and even the customers of the Service Authority currently. So whenever a big entity comes in and they want to do something, right, we can do, we have no negotiating power. We have to have their goodwill to do certain things. Good examples, what kind of just occurred, I think everybody knows that we are taking 600,000 gallons from Birchwood. And I've heard several times, why didn't you get more? Well, we asked many, many times and the answer was you can take 600,000 gallons or you can get a poke in the eye. Yeah, choose. So we took the 600,000 gallons. That was really the choice, it was take it or not. They weren't offering more. So, but we don't have, there's no negotiating posture. They don't need us. It's just a nice gesture, right, to help us out. But there's no negotiating, I can't go like, wow, do you really want that? Do you really want this? You know, we need you to do X, Y, or Z so we can, so you can do what you want to do. There's just no negotiating posture. When you're with, when it's a county entity, it's, okay, you want this, you know, we've got to look at that, got to look at this. The county has a much stronger negotiating stance than we do. You also, the other thing that I think, and if Ms. Cupco wasn't on the Service Authority, there wouldn't be all the grants that we got. I mean, she really worked hard and talked to people and got all these grants for water and for sewer, right? But she's very connected and she's, I'm convinced because she's a supervisor, she knows who to talk to about politics and whatnot. I know political people, but I don't know, I don't have any influence in them. I can't go ask a senator to, hey, could you get some money in the budget for us? It's just not doable. So barring someone like Ms. Cupco on the board, asking, you know, Senator Stewart, I think it was, to put stuff in the budget, you know, it would have never happened. So, because the county's operating in news of all these, all these different avenues and funds and, you know, I can't remember who, it might have been Ms. Cupco again brought up the, or it might have been Ms. Binder brought up the water fund that for the, for people who can pay for their water bill. I've never heard of that, you know, but it's because, it's because the county's looking at all that stuff and has... all that stuff and has, and, and runs into all that stuff. In my everyday business, um, I'm, I'm running into, how do I get cheaper water for, for people and whatnot? It just, it just seems, um, with the, with the, with, you're going to have to have a lot of political, a lot of political connections to, to help fund things. You're going to be dealing with DEQ, um, and it's, it sort of leads into the, the, the other part of the discussion with the, with the water, is that, you know, we're in the Potomac Aquifer and everything's going to get limited really, really quick. Um, when we're talking to DEQ, they danced around the subject, but Mr. Morris kind of indicated, I'm pretty sure they're going to start, uh, whacking private wells at some point. I don't know how they're going to do it. It might be you have to have, you know, X number of acres before you can build a well or, or whatnot. Um, and, and they do that in others, they do that in other places where you have to have so many acres to have a well and whatnot, so they, they space them out and, and make it so that you're, you're influencing it less. But that may mean like, if you own a small piece of property that normally you could build a house on, it suddenly becomes unbuildable. It's useless property. Um, and they may also at some point say if you're, you know, no more houses, uh, unless they're on a, on a, on public water. So, uh, and they have, as, as you, you're more than well aware, when the state government tells you that you're going to do something, it's, it's, if you can't sue them and beat them, you're, you're pretty much stuck doing it. So, um, the, the advantage I think really is, is negotiating posture and helping out the, helping out the, the, um, the customers on the, on the service authority. I think there's, there's, the, since I've been here, there's just so many different things that have come up because the supervisors are, are out doing things and hear about funds or, or hear about ways to get mon, get money or whatnot that just the average board member's just not going, going to do. And I think having it as a, having it as a, a public utility where P, where somebody's in that realm and, and dealing with all that, you're going to, you're going to find more, uncover more opportunities for, for funding things than we currently maybe realize.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Um, if this, if the service authority were to be a public utility, would it be held the same way as that relates to the budget with a three percent variance, um, for a public hearing?
So if it were a utility under the county, then the, the budgetary process, to my knowledge, would have to follow the, the county rules for, um, budget changes, budget, budget adoption, um, amendments and all those things.
So, that's what I thought. And so when we think about that, right now, as, as the service authority stands, it, it doesn't really matter what the variance is on the budget. Um, it can be approved and then we move on. Um, being in, as a utility, it has more oversight, more accountability by the county because it's sort of like a pseudo-county utility already, but they don't only have the accountability. Um, and it could make it so that they would have more accountability and, um, oversight and the efficiencies, um, would definitely come into play. Uh, the service authority is, that, and King George is, I think, the third most expensive water in Virginia. Um, I know that my water bill's like seven hundred and fifty dollars every, every two months. Um, and let's just keep it real, it's really not that good of water either. Um, and at the end of the day, our, our clients are bleeding. They have to pay a lot of money for water. And that, and I appreciate, um, Ms. Bender's comments, but I do want to add some comments what, for, about, about, um, the service authority being a public utility and the need for the county to pitch in. Because at the end of the day, when people are coming to the county and have to, um, pay for the service authority, they also did not incur that debt. Um, that debt was incurred years ago because of the mismanagement by the county.
Um, I think Ms. Bender, I guess to continue some of the conversation, you had asked for the advantages. So, you know, when I took on the role, it, to me, it was a natural step to look at it as a utility. Um, because one, your HR department's supporting it, your finance department is supporting it, county engineering is supporting it, and, um, I think Mr. Morris is exactly right and, and Mr. Parker, when it comes to economic development, you got to be at the table and, and I understand that the service authority has been at the table for economic development projects in the past, but it's, it's kind of like going and making sure that you have dominion at the table with you. Um, when it, if it was part of the county, if it's all seamless, then it's a, it seems much easier, and that's how I looked at it. When I first got here, also Mr. Cusenberry, who's your county engineer, had explained to me that he was at the table for everything up until, I believe, like twenty fifteen. And there was a decision made to keep the county administrator out of discussions or interactions with the general manager at the time. And what, that to me was a big loss. Um, and I think, you know, my predecessors as county administrators were, were, you know, were suffering because I think Mr. Cusenberry obviously had a tremendous historical knowledge of this county and, and, and obviously great engineering skills. And so I think that was one of the things that I thought would be logical. Um, you're already, the county, like I said, is already supporting the, the service authority. So it's, and, uh, through its administration and, and the engineering. And Mr. Parker's right, I mean, Bryce is, it's up to his eyeballs. You guys see the to-do list that I include, uh, the information, or the, uh, the projects that, that are being handled by, by county engineering for the utility. And some of the major projects that are on the horizon for this, for this county. Um, and these are county projects. I mean, they're being coordinated by the service authority. The decommissioning of two wastewater plants, uh, Perkins and, and Oakland Park, that is a major county, those are major county projects. Um, the potential and the future of cer, uh, transitioning from groundwater to surface water, those, that's a county project. And so I think that's where I looked at things, and that's where I think the advantage is, um, that you would benefit by just bringing it under. And I think the other thing is, is that clearly the, the decision of the board of directors to privatize the operations of the water and the wastewater was a very excellent choice, great decision, because I think you're, the, the dividends are going to pay off, they're already paying off, they're only going to get better in terms of the ability to have professionally operated, um, systems. Not that our crews that were doing it were not professional, they just, we could not get, because of the pay ranges and things like that, we couldn't get those people that were highly trained and, and capable and, and things like that to, to stay. And, and so, um, you, you know that, and, and so I think that, that transition to their operations, to a private operator, really kind of changed the nature of this service authority from, as Mr. Parker said, it's really now essentially a department. Um, it, it really is. And, and it, and I think that's where everybody is. And I think what Ms. Lackey was, was outlining was the process, because I think your colleagues had indicated they were interested in, in, you know, at least having the process start. So I realize you may have a different opinion, but that's, that's my information.
Mr. Chair, I'm already getting the feeling I'm the only one here on this side of the fence on this story, but, um, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. I, my whole six years, I've wanted to fix the service authority, but it is not an easy task. For thirty years, people didn't do preventive maintenance, people wanted to get reelected, they didn't want to raise taxes. It, my view, looking into the research of the service authority, shouldn't have been, started the way people had good intentions, took on debt from the beginning. We all make bad choices, we kick the can down the road, and so we're here. But one of the things I did want to clarify, I understand the whole economic development, I disagree that we could have negotiated more at the table as the service authority with, uh, Birchwood and Amazon, but that is a difference of opinion. And then with the DEQ and the groundwater, I don't think they're going to take away private wells. That would be a big political fight. But I do know at the DEQ level, they have basically said, King George will be going to surface water for their service authority or economic development. That's, that's a given, everybody east of ninety-five, and it is because of the aquifer. And if you actually, it's fascinating reading the water supply plan that actually mentions King George and talks about their critical cells, which is a very, uh, uh, abnormal thing in the water plan, because if you could read, King George is in two, two, um, river basins, the Rappahannock and the Potomac, the lower Rappahannock and the lower Potomac. And it's very unusual because they mentioned King George having its own plan and that it has a very specific topography. And then I actually asked the soil scientists about that, and they think it's because of the fossil, because we were at the bottom of the ocean once, and the fossil layer lets the salt water come up and permeate, which drains the aquifer, which means it's hard to replenish. So it is fascinating that we're mentioned like that. So it is very important that we are good stewards of the water. That was one of my arguments for the Birchwood project, that the water was the life. But I just want to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row and get from Davenport, I would like to ask them some questions to make sure about the commingling of, you know, the funds, how is the debt separate from the counties? Like, how does that work? And, you know, how do you separate that so that the county's bond rating doesn't? And how do you pay for the positions you are now absorbing? Like, how, how is that going to affect us? But I haven't, that's not here today.
Mr. Chairman, can I add comments on that? Because I wanted to say something about that before with the timing. So I know that I have been on the board, this is my second year, I think. Um, we have been talking about this for years, and even before me, I think you guys were talking about this. It, it just feels like every time it comes up, in fact, Davenport was here at our last joint meeting, it feels like it just takes more and more time because it just keeps on getting kicked to further and further. And as it gets kicked further and further, guess what? We're losing money because there is efficiencies that we could have as it keeps on getting kicked. So I would argue that, I know that you said that we need more time, we need more this and that. I think we have what we need and we need to do this sooner than later.
So part of the process, could we have them come so I can ask questions? Can I send the questions to Mr. Miller to get them answered? Because obviously.
I think that's fair. I think Davenport can answer the questions. I don't think they'd have, I don't think it would take them that long. And I, I think it's a fair, I think it's a fair ask, uh, because I think the, the customers, um, and also the citizens of King George are going to want to see it. I mean, you're going to, you're going to want to have that data. Um, so, so I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a.
I can, I can ask, uh, Mr. Lox to be at the next meeting and, and provide an overview if that's what.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be, that would be good to have on, on public record, kind of how it works from a, an outside source.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to state very clearly for the record that we have a separate legal instrument with regard to water, because proffers must be voluntary and they must relate to the impacts from a project. Thank you.
Can I just do one clarifier on that? Um, I, I did want to ask you for, is there any way we can get from Birchwood, Amazon, um, the amount of water that will be used for their nineteen data centers? Because that is important as part of this discussion also, the gallons usage.
Do you mean potable or non-potable?
We want to, you want to know what, what their usage is? I mean, they'll, they'll have to have a, a permit modification process that will be a public process, so I imagine there'll be documents as part of that process that will be publicly available.
And I'm not just asking about potable water. I'm asking about the actual water they're using for the data center. It's just as my argument in line and thought at the la, at the meeting when the project was approved, is there is only one straw in that river right now that we're going to have to draw from for our surface water for our citizens in the future. And so we need to know how much water they're going to take out, and, you know, we're going to have to purchase it from the, the permit holder because we do not hold the permit. So that would be good to know in the budgeting process and moving forward, what that amount, actual amount is. And I know they've done projections of it, I'm sure they have.
Yeah, I think, um, Mr. Miller was, um, kind of had a sidebar where he said, we can certainly request that information. I don't know that they're obligated to provide it other than through the permitting process through DEQ, but we can certainly.
And that's, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm asking, if they say no, that's fine, but I do know they will have to get a permit modification because their permit is for a coal-fired electrical plant, not a data campus or a data center. So, I mean, I'm sure that'll have to come through the DEQ permitting process.
So there's a request to have Davenport come at the next meeting, hopefully?
Yes, and I, I don't, would you like them to also come and be at the present at the board of supervisors meeting?
If they're going to come brief, yeah, because at the end of the day, that would, uh, it would require a resolution from both boards. So sure, if they're going to be here, let's have them present the information.
Have them do a presentation then, yes, sir.
That's fine, and, uh, if we want to hold off an extra meeting to, to wait for the resolution to come forth, so it'd be the second meeting in October, that's fine, assuming things shake out the way, I think they will with Davenport. Um, but I, I would ask if everyone would be amenable to, Ms. Lackey, at least moving forward, strengthen the craft of those resolutions just to be ready.
Yeah, I, I would say craft them, um, to show we're ready if, if it seems acceptable.
Was there any other discussion then upon the service authority versus utility? And we have a couple of other discussion items as well.
Yes, so the, the other has kind of been alluded to, so the regulatory agencies, um, uh, and I will make clarification, I don't think the, DEQ's going to come down and say, if you have a private well, you're not, you can't have it anymore, and if it fails, you probably can re, redo it, right, on your property. What I've tended to see in other, in other places, Charles County, Maryland's probably a good place, is they've started, um, Maryland's version of DEQ has started restricting, you know, the, how, the size of the land on which you can put a well and a septic. So, um, they, you know, it gets big, it starts to, it starts to go, you know, two acres or five acres, you have to, basically, um, you have to have a large piece of land so that you're not interfering with it, with it, and then they sometimes will, will, um, affect density, like you can't have so many houses per square mile or whatnot. So, um, they, I don't think they'd ever be like, you can't have your well if you've already got one, but they surely could be, that piece of property you thought you were going to build your house on, not, not anymore, um, not unless you go buy your neighbor's land or whatnot and get it big enough. So, um, and that's, that's been done in several states and whatnots, and DEQ wasn't really forthcoming on exactly what they were going to do, but, um, with how squirrely they were when, when I asked the question, it means, it means to me anyway that they're thinking, they're, they've got something under contemplation, um, and haven't come up with a, an exact plan on it. Um, so that, um, but I, I think moving forward, it will be a kind of an issue for the, for the entire county, um, where, you know, one, you're not going to be able to, commercial wells will, will go extinct, right? So if you don't have, that's a, that's a one hundred percent DEQ said, said that at the meeting, they are going to, they're, if, if your, uh, commercial well interferes with those, those, those little squares, those little impact squares, done, shut it down. Um, so, so commercial wells out towards, you know, Oakland Park, Sealston, they're all going to go offline. Uh, so, um, I would say the Birchwood wells will go offline, because I don't think they're going to get re-permitted. That's my, that's my guess because they're impacting that, uh, a critical zone. Um, it also says Sealston Wells going to be impacting a critical zone, so they'll want that offline too. So, um, some of the school systems wells will not be allowed. So there's a, there's a couple item, items to, to consider on that, um, while, while, that are, that are, will impact the county on a, on a, on a bigger level, not just the, uh, the particular customers. Um, because it, because one, if, if you can't, can't build on the property you wanted to, that's kind of problematic, um, because your land value is not worth anything. Uh, and then also if, if, um, some of these commercial wells, like, like, uh, I, I think of Bloomia, because Bloomia, I'm pretty sure is on wells, um, aren't they? I think they're, I think they're on wells, yeah, those wells are going to go offline. So the question, the question comes is, is, because they're, they're, I guarantee impacting the critical zone too, and, um, they've indicated they're telling a lot of commercial wells to shut down, basically east of ninety-five, and they're dialing back a lot of the, uh, capacity on, on the public system wells tremendously. Um, and, uh, you're going to see that here, every other county is going to get their, uh, their wells, um, downgraded, the capacity, the capacity you're allowed, not that the well couldn't pump the capacity, it's just you're not going to be allowed to. So, um, so commercial development, sands, um, sands, uh, sands of surface water system is going to go out the window pretty, pretty quickly. I'd say within the next ten years, probably the next permitting round, you're going to see a lot of that, that go away. And some of the places that we have here will, may lose their, their permit for a well in the not-so-distant future. So that's, those are just kind of things I want to. So that's, those are just kinda things I wanted to make, more make the, the supervisor aware of, um, in meetings we've had with DEQ, just as, um, everyone moves forward considering how development and, and whatnot, and in the county, that there's a, not that, the, the commercial well, um, shut down and, and the downgrading of our public wells, that is going to happen. That's, DEQ's going to start doing that. That's, that, that's not a, a question, they blatantly told us that. Um, and they're already doing it in other counties. Um, but the, but the, I would, I, I would caution that, that, um, that they may also start doing stuff with, with, like I said, I don't think they're ever gonna tell you you can't refix your, your private well and your property if you've had one. But I, I do get the feeling they're going to restrict how many wells are in a particular location, or if you can even put one in a particular location if it's too close to a critical zone. And there's a lot of critical zones. It's, so those are, those are just kinda things I wanted to, to, to make everybody, uh, both boards aware of. The grant money issue, I, I, I think we've talked, we talked through it with Ms. Hahn. We were initially kinda worried that, that if we flipped it from a, an authority to utility, the grant money would, would, um, be an issue. Uh, we, we are working on getting confirmation on, on, on that from the, from VDH and DEQ on it. But, um, uh, Ms. Hahn doesn't believe now, now it would be an issue because it's just, just how things have changed with, with the, with the funds. We haven't used much of ours. I think the county's used most of theirs. The, this is the ARPA-related funds. Um, and, and, uh, I think we've already beat to death the current and future water, water issues. Um, that's the current, the current ones are, you know, D, as everybody's probably well now, DEQ's looking to get us off of, uh, off of well water sooner rather than later. And that's not just King George, that's everybody, including Akamak County, which is a peninsula in the middle of brackish water and saltwater. So they don't have anything but, um, anything easy. So, and they're looking to get them off the, uh, off wells as well. So, um, those are the, the future issues are we gotta get on surface water and, um, and, uh, the initial salvo will probably be, uh, stuff off the Rappahannock. The Rappahannock's obviously the, or maybe not obviously, Rappahannock's the better place to get water to treat. It's easy, it's more easily treatable. The Potomac's not quite as good a quality.
Um, if I could just add to what Mr. Parker was discussing, um, so the current and future water issues, obviously, you know, we, we know the MOU with, um, with Burchwood and, and Ms. Lackey and I are, are working through that. Um, and, um, the, the current water issues, and Mr. Parker's correct in terms of what our conversations with DEQ, how they have kinda transpired. And a lot of this happened as a result of the Hop Yard, um, water permit, the groundwater permit. And as you may remember, that Hop Yard has never had a permit. For whatever reason, DEQ never exercised it. Um, and they came to us and told us what their permit levels, that they were gonna recommend. Um, there was a big movement at, you know, now with DEQ to try to streamline and to really push out these, these permit applications. Um, and, uh, so Hop Yard was one of the ones on the top of their list, essentially. And, uh, and so, uh, they informed us that we had to, you know, basically act and accept their, their modifications or their, or their permit levels, um, or, uh, you know, being a problem. And, and what Bryce Young, uh, had come up with was we were pretty significantly, uh, far apart on what their projections were, um, and their restrictions were versus what we were actually using in Hop Yard. So, um, the board had, uh, we announced this in a, in a public meeting, we, we submitted a, um, a voluntary consent order. We are an offer to go into a consent order, um, to start working on a plan that was a multi-year endeavor. And, you know, 10 years, 15 years down the road, we'd have a new transition plan from, from groundwater to surface water for not just Hop Yard, but for a number of other critical well systems, Courthouse and Canterbury and Circle, um, you know, and even the Dahlgren system. We've, we've heard back that, um, I don't know that they're not interested or that they wanna kinda move forward on a Hop Yard, uh, permit. So we will probably be receiving some kind of information from them here in the future. I think we had that meeting, Bryce, I think that call was probably about a month ago, wasn't it? Um, and the, and the, they had some changeover at DEQ, um, personnel-wise. And so, uh, there's new people involved and, and I think they would like to see something with Hop Yard. Um, so I guess we'll be revisiting that here soon. But it is a big issue because it's, it's really what Mr. Parker's talking about. It triggered a lot of other discussions that we are gonna have issues with some of our other groundwater withdrawal permits. And so, you know, the transition to surface water is essential. It's, it's very critical, it's very important. Um, I don't know that they're gonna say tomorrow it has to be done or anything like that, but there's clearly gonna be a, a pretty intensive amount of time, uh, you know, that they're gonna look for us to do this on, so...
Yeah, so, so just kinda jump on that too. So from the discussions with GQ, just so you're aware, basically courthouse, you cannot build anything else on the courthouse system. Just, it's, it's, it's done, it's, it's tapped out. There is no possibility to build the commercial portion of Hop Yard at this time. Um, the DEQ has, has indicated they, even though they, even though like, uh, Mr. Young had calculated, we're using more water than they'd like us to give in Hop Yard, there is part of the regulation, they can't take it away from, um, they can't downgrade the well so mu, so much that they can't give water to, to citizens for residential use. But they will not allow any other usage of that water. So I don't know how they'll modify the permit. I know what they want, what they'd like to get it down to based on their model, but the, the law does say they can't reduce it so much. But that goes into also the, um, the discussions on, um, you know, sprinklers and whatnot, those will probably ultimately be almost banned. I mean, you won't be able to water your lawn because it's just wasteful, wasteful usage there. But, um, they are, they are, the regs are required to allow residential, uh, the residential usage to continue, but they don't have to allow any additional, um, beyond what was planned. So if there's no, you can't now put in a subdivision in, in the courthouse area and expect, expect to get, get the water you need, it's just not gonna, not gonna happen. If it's not been approved already, it's, it's off the table until there's some, some kinda surface water. Same thing with Hop Yard, operators, pumps are, are capable of much, much more, more water than, um, DEQ's going to allow. So there's, so any development off of them is, is strictly finishing out that subdivision, uh, residential-wise.
Mr. Ranger? Um, one final comment about future needs, and this benefits every, and I do mean every property owner in the county. Our, what you pay for fire insurance is known, is determined by the ISO rating, which stands for insurance, insurance service organization. Currently, everybody in the county is somewhere, it's like an eight, nine, or 10. I pay a 10, equivalent to having no fire department, even though I stood halfway between company one and company two. A major component in your rating is your water delivery system. The more you can improve that and you can get water to areas where there might be a fire affects your rating. The lower the rating, the lower your fire insurance is for your property. So I would much rather pay some money into improving our system for all of our citizens than, than my insurance company getting more profit because we know what kinda profit these insurance companies make. I mean, just look at the salaries, they pay their, their top executives and stuff. And they're into business to make money. So do we pay to make our life better or do we pay to make these people richer? And there's not a property owner in this county that is not paying fire, or they should be paying fire insurance. So it benefits everybody, the more we can expand and improve the system.
Do we have anything else? Any other discussion?
Mr. Miller, I have a question about, um, we were just talking about, about the permit. I, I imagine that this is an issue in other areas too. Is there a consultant that maybe could come in and help us and look at the different options that are available for surface water and give us some sort of direction of what we should do about that?
Yeah, certainly. And, and, um, you know, we, we do have an engineering firm with, uh, that we, well, several that we use. TRC is one, and then, um, uh, RK&amp;K. So they're both engaged with the service authority on different projects. But, um, I know there are also specialists, um, you know, Mr. Palmeroy, who helped us with the consent order on Hop Yard as a, as a water lawyer. Um, and we can certainly reach out to him and ask for, um, some guidance there. I can defer that to Ms., Ms. Lackey. Because I do agree that, you know, from the standpoint of what your future is and how you wanna do this, then you, you probably wanna bring in some folks that are, that are specialists in this area.
Yeah, so RK&amp;K did, did do a study kind of on locations of where you could land plants and where, where you could take water from, from the rapid, from the Rappahannock or, uh, and if we were doing a joint, um, kind of a joint, uh, pump station with, with Caroline. So there, it's, it's fairly limited, the, there's a fairly limited stretch of the Rappahannock that's where the water's deep enough, there's enough of it, and it's res, and it's not brackish yet, um, that you can, that you can extract from. So it's, it's a, it's limited, it's limited. It's not, it's not even, it's not the whole length of the county. Um, but, but RK&amp;K does have a study where they kinda put a lot of that together. I don't know if you were on the board when, when they did, when they did that one. But, uh, I think Mr. Miller could probably provide that.
But I think, and not just in terms of these studies, but giving us some direction. It's not like, can, can they say, "Here's your best options, here's what I recommend"? I mean, I, I certainly can't do that on this board. I don't have the education or knowledge to be able to do that. I don't think anybody in this room does.
Well, I think the plan was, is if, if DEQ agreed with your proposed consent order to get some time to study Hop Yard and to study your entire system and, and what your plan was on a transition, then obviously the, the service authority would engage some kind of a consultant to come in and basically develop that plan. I, I mean, I, I think Mr. Young has got, you know, very good skills, but I don't know that he is a water engineer or a water expert. But that, you would want somebody that would help you guide that plan and work with you collaboratively on what, on what that would be, how that would be done. Does that answer that question? I know that we're not alone, and you are right. We are in what's known as the Potomac aquifer. It's not a good one. We're like the second worst in terms of availability of the aquifer. The worst one is, is Mr. Parker referred to as out there on Akamak, um, County. And, you know, they, I can't remember the name of that one, but, um, that is a really bad system, I mean, or a bad groundwater, uh, area. So we're, we're like the second worst, um, and, you know, critical. So we definitely have some people that we could, resources that we could reach out to and we'll be happy to, to do that.
Mr. Miller, I was gonna bring up what I had spoken to you about. Um, at my last HB meeting, I had a discussion with the second-in-command at DEQ. And I, I had mentioned before many meetings that it would be great if they could come and boards could ask them questions, you know, for things we don't know about DEQ. Would it be, I had talked to them about coming in December or January for the new board. Would it be maybe better for all these questions to have them come a little earlier where we could ask them more questions because all of us could be more well-versed on this? I don't know how they would feel doing it earlier rather than later. I was thinking of for the, so new board members can get up to speed. But they offered, they thought it was a great idea and they thought it should be done all over the state, and maybe we could be the first one they tried it out on.
Yeah, I, I'm sooner, sooner rather than later. I don't, because it'll go on public record and whatnot. So, I mean, I mean, the sooner you hear it, and there's a lot of people that'll stay in the boards, e, even, even at this, even at the shift, there's still, there's still several people that'll stay on, no matter...
They were talking about it like in a work session. So we have a meeting next Thursday, so I can mention it to them. But they, they liked the idea. As I said, there's a lot of us that, there's so many questions, you don't know.
Yeah. All right, I guess we're looking for, uh, looking for motions.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed session to discuss water and sewer provisions associated with a proposed local incentive package for a major economic development project pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A6 for discussion and consideration of investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the county would be affected and specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice, excuse me, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-37118. I invite the King George County Service Authority Board of Directors, County Administrator, County Attorney, and Assistant County Attorney because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of one or, one or more of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor from the Board of Supervisors, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. The Board of Supervisors is in closed session.
I move that the King George County Service Authority Board of Directors convene in closed session to discuss water and sewer, sewer provisions associated with an, a proposed local incentive package for major economic development project pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A6 for discussion and consideration of investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the county would be affected and specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-37118. I invite the King George County Board of Supervisors, interim general manager, county attorney, and assistant county attorney because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712F.
I have a motion made and properly seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? All those on the Board of Directors?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are in closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. We will, um, roll call vote. Mrs. Bender?
So certify.
Mrs. Cupka?
So certify.
Mr. Stonehill?
So certify.
Chair so certifies, we're back in open session.
I move that the King George County Service Authority Board of Directors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
I have a motion being properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll, do a roll call vote. Ms. Cleveland?
So certify.
Mr. Morris?
So certify.
Ms. Bender?
So certify.
Ms. Cupka?
So certify.
And the chair so certifies, we are back in open session. Is there any other business to bring before the boards this evening? Okay.
Right, I move to adjournment for the King George Board of Supervisors till Tuesday, October 3rd, 2020.
September 26th.
Uh, move to adjourn till Tuesday, September 26th at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries. We're adjourned.
I move to adjourn to Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023 at 5:30 in the boardroom.
Second.
A motion being seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Chair votes aye, motion carries.